Welcome to City Council Chronicles. Somewhere out there, a city council meeting is happening, and you're not watching it, but I am. Hey there, I'm Michael Karlik, and you're listening to the City Council Chronicles Podcast. For city council meeting reviews, visit councilchronicles.com. Last week, I reviewed the Half Moon Bay, California City Council Meeting, where we had a regular whodunit on our hands. Some miscreant had stolen the brand-new gates from the Johnston House, and the city was awash in suspects. Was it the kindly old doctor? Was it the affluent socialite? Was it the reclusive innkeeper? No, it was probably some teenagers. But if you see a pair of gates around the Bay Area that are not where they should be, contact the mayor of Half Moon Bay. Also, on Monday, we released another episode of our Best Thing/Worst Thing project. We went to Las Cruces, New Mexico, took a nature hike, and got in the middle of a medical emergency. Here's a little taste.
Did someone call and tell you? Did someone call and tell you?
Yeah. Stuck your shoulder?
Yeah.
Still can't walk? Do you know?
He wasn't walking when I left, but I think he can come back very slowly.
So, I mean, we could call the paramedics. Is that, do you think it's necessary?
I mean, I got someone's cellphone number before I left, so do you want me to call and ask?
Yeah.
If you liked that episode, please hit the subscribe button and leave a rating and short review on iTunes. That little gesture helps raise our visibility. On today's episode, I talked to Andre Seiya, councilman in Patterson, New Jersey. Now, New Jersey is a special place because city council meetings there tend to go like this.
We have nasty people, alright? Where do we go along? We have nasty people.
You want to deceive people. And on top of that, you've been on the internet printing garbage.
He's a failure. He's ineffective as a councilperson. He wants respect, but he doesn't know how to earn that respect.
As you heard, Patterson City Council Meetings are no cakewalk. In fact, the day we talked, Councilman Seiya told me that he was dealing with two shootings and Patterson's mayor being arraigned in court. Or, as it's known in New Jersey, a slow Monday. So, yeah, you'll want to stay tuned. Episode 34, The Music is by BenSound.com. Councilman, when I invited you on here, I explained that this program is for finding out what makes your city council meetings unusual or noteworthy compared to most other city councils. So, what do you think we're going to talk about?
Well, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity, and I can tell you that there's never a dull moment at a Patterson Municipal Council Meeting. As a matter of fact, they tend to be marathon sessions. And within the last nine years I've been on the council, since 2008, we've taken votes of no confidence in two different mayors.
Uh huh.
We've had issues with shootings, as far as gun violence is concerned, and we've actually managed to adopt landmark pieces of legislation. We adopted a commercial curfew ordinance which regulates the hours of operation for establishments that are in crime hotspots. But we've also brought some, I guess, less-than-proud moments in Patterson as far as our municipal council meetings are concerned.
Uh, yes, and that is what I'd like to focus on, not to the detriment of anything else you mentioned, but this is New Jersey, so let's get into it.
Yeah.
This first clip I want to play for you is Patterson's former city council president, Ozlong Gao Senior.
Wow, I saw him.
Oh, well, that makes it interesting. Here he is during an interview.
There's nothing hostile about our council environment. There's, you know, we've never hit each other. We can argue. We might yell sometimes. You might have to. And how we express ourselves is, you know, up to each individual. And Rigo, I mean, I have to say it, he's a coward.
Okay, he's referring to former councilman Rigo Rodriguez there.
Ah.
I'm sure you have all the stories about Councilman Rodriguez. My question is, one, is it true that no one has hit each other at your council meetings? And, two, is the presence or absence of physical assault what makes a council meeting hostile?
Alright, I can confirm that no one has been physically assaulted, particularly councilpeople, since I've been on the city council. There have been instances before I got on of shoving matches, but there've been a lot of shouting matches. And he's right, I mean, our meetings get contentious, so people do raise their voices. Sometimes there's name-calling involved.
Yeah.
But it's not like, with all due respect, a session of the Japanese Parliament where you've got people kicking each other, and sometimes I've seen people get stabbed.
Hmm.
And it's not even, and it pales in comparison to a session of the British House of Commons, where they're resorting to not just name-calling, but profanity.
Well, I mean, in a lot of city councils, there are citizens who come in, and they yell and complain, and sometimes it's justified, other times it's bogus. You guys have that for sure, but it is relatively rare that councilmembers tear each other a new hole.
Whoa.
On camera to their faces. Why does that happen in Patterson?
For lack of a better term, for lack of a better term. Well, I mean, I guess I would say we vilify, you vilify one another, malign one another, that type of thing. Sometimes there's some character defamation. I mean, we're talking about, if you're doing, if you're, if you have a vote of no confidence, obviously, there's some people that are not going to have some nice things to say.
Right, right, and you mentioned votes of no confidence, which you had for each of your past two mayors. Uh, let's slow-walk this a little bit. What does the mayor do in your council meetings?
The mayor actually doesn't have a role because it's a city council meeting. It's almost like the legislative session. There is an expectation that the mayor should be there if he is, in particular, if he's announcing a specific initiative.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this particular mayor has become somewhat of a lightning rod for controversy. I mean, evidently, he's been indicted, so this is raised the ire of a number of individuals, particularly from the general public. Not, not that many councilpeople, though.
Yeah, yeah, look, Patterson has not been so lucky with mayors, okay? Your previous mayor was indicted for a financial scandal.
Right.
Your current mayor was just indicted for another financial scandal.
Yes.
I would point out that in 2014, you ran for mayor. So, Andre, if you had won, which criminal charges would you be indicted for by now?
None of them, none of them. I would have helped reform the city. As a matter of fact, since 2014, I've been able, and thankfully, I've been able to produce for the people I represent. I mean, we've, we've got a new playground, we've got a new preschool.
Uh huh.
Nice try with that one, though. I mean, I go in there with the best of intentions.
Well, this conversation is being recorded, but I'm not expecting you to indict yourself in it.
Yeah, very good.
Your former mayor, Jeffrey Jones, walked out of the city council meeting in which he was testifying about his alleged misconduct. Now, that was obviously theater, and theater is not necessarily bad. If you were the guy who people are applauding for, it feels pretty great. But what are some of the ways that the Patterson City Council has enabled theatrics? And what do you think your city council can do to prevent distractions like this?
That's actually a fair question. When I was council president from 2013 to 2014, we made sure that we had strictly adhered to the ground rules as far as the public portion is concerned. Participants, potential participants, were told well in advance and repeatedly that you had three minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And that we wouldn't, we would certainly not tolerate character assassinations nor vulgarity. So, I'd like to think that we were effective during that aforementioned time period. So, it's a, it's a matter of adhering to the rules and disciplining anyone who you feel goes outside the boundaries.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, you were the council's president, and I did find one video from that time where people...
I thought you would.
I just found one, don't worry, where public commenters were attacking you after you got some negative press.
Yes.
One person said this.
A vote with say is a vote with batteries in this city. A vote with say is a vote with a dividend point to control this city.
Another person had this to say.
But Andre Seiya, it would be better off if we simply got rid of him, and he wasn't on the council, and he wasn't mayor. But if he gets to mayor's office, it's his next epic storm for council, for senate, for assembly, or for president. And can you think of a disaster for that say as a president?
Okay, and he says if you were president, you would be a disaster. Uh, this was pre-Donald Trump, by the way, so who knows if his standards have changed?
Yeah, that's funny.
This entire time, there are people standing in the back waving signs. How do you handle being able to sit there passively while looking out at a mass of people who seem to not like you?
Well, Harry Truman, President Harry Truman, who I feel was one of the better presidents, said if you can't stand to eat, get out of the kitchen. And I always said, especially with the president's chair, there's a lot of heat in the seat.
Yeah.
So, if you don't want that type of, you know you're going to attract criticism irrespective of what you do, because probably half or little less than half of the folks are not going to agree with what you say, but you're just going to have to be able to absorb whatever the criticism is, either whether they're right or whether they're wrong. And in that case, I believe they were wrong. But I'm the city council president, I have to preside over the meeting, I got to manage the meeting, I got to make sure we get through the agenda. And I, quite frankly, I don't think it's in the best interest of municipal government if I engage in one-on-ones or attacks with members of the general public. They have every right to express their opinions for three minutes, and once the three minutes is over, we have to move on to the next speaker.
Hmm. I want to go back to our friend Ozlong Gao Senior.
Oh my god, he's my friend, by the way. For the record, he is a friend, personal friend.
Uh, I do not know him, so I can't say if he's a friend or foe of the program at this point.
I'm going to give you the operative word, Mike, that describes him.
Okay.
Passionate. He's very passionate.
Uh, yes, passion can manifest itself in a lot of different ways. And I'm going to play this clip of Councilman Gao getting into it with Councilman Julio Taveras.
Oh.
While you're silent, if you want to speak, not on your behalf, okay? Excuse me. I can speak whatever term I feel like speaking today. You will not silence me. Anyways, as I was saying, excuse me, excuse me. Excuse you, we have to put up with it. No respect. Excuse me. You have no respect. Excuse me. Go ahead, Councilman. Truly, I have no respect for you. Let it be clear. Let it be clear. There's no respect for you. I don't want to do that. I've given the benefit of the doubt. It doesn't cease to amaze me. The behavior is consistent. I even supported this individual when he ran for office, because I honestly felt he was talented, he was educated, he was smart, and this is what we have to put up with. I don't try to control him, I don't want nothing to do with him. The last time we had this kind of debate, the last time we had this kind of debate, he charged me, and yet I have to go to court because of him. So, I can't talk to him, I can't fight him, I don't know what else to do at all. So, the next thing I'm going to do when he has an outburst like that is I'm going to call the Sergeant of Arson, which is the Patterson police officer, and I will have an agreement. Okay? I will have an agreement.
Okay, Jesus Christ. So, Gao is talking in the third person about Taveras. He says, "I can't talk with him, I can't fight him, and the next time, I'll kick him out."
Yes.
You are sitting next to Councilman Taveras, and you have this forced grin on your face. It's like, "I wish I stayed home today."
Ha.
And when Taveras says that he has no respect for Gao, you react like someone sprayed a water bottle in your face. Why were these two grown men feuding in public?
I don't recall the nature of the confrontation. However, I can tell you this, and it goes back to how I described Councilman Gao, or former Councilman Gao. They're both passionate. That's what happens when you have heated individuals in the chamber.
Uh, you're using that word passionate, and I believe you. You're passionate about public service and municipal curfews and summer camps.
Right.
Councilman Gao seemed to be passionate about getting Taveras to shut up, and Taveras was passionate about Gao siding against him in the election, because the context was it was a public commenter who was running against Taveras, and Taveras felt that Gao was giving him an unfair advantage in the meeting. Uh, I understand it's probably uncomfortable for you to watch your fellow councilmembers fighting in public like that, but is there any actual harm to the city when this happens?
No, not at all. It's just sometimes the perception. They'll say that we're a dysfunctional unit, and they'll dismiss us. When I say "they," it probably, it could be people on the outside of Patterson, and then obviously viewers who are tuning in.
Um, a word about the viewers, though. Uh, the clips I found were on YouTube, and they're pretty one-sided in that they are only the negative stuff.
Yeah.
And that's because I couldn't find videos of your council meetings online. Now, I'm sure that in most of your council meetings, you're doing great stuff, and if you televise the whole meeting, people might see that you only threaten your fellow councilmembers half of the time.
Not even half the time, less than half the time.
Uh, yeah, silver lining. So, what do you have to say about this idea that without the video, people aren't getting the whole story?
Patterson has to get into the 21st century as far as live streaming and the way that we are cataloging or archiving these meetings.
You kind of have to get into the 19th century, because even the written meeting minutes aren't available.
The 19th century.
Did you know that?
I know that, I know.
Yeah, well, people were taking meeting minutes in the 19th century, I'm assuming.
That's right. They, I'm sure they were, in the 1800s. You're right about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, for the sake of transparency, you're right. And also, if we're going to debunk that notion that all we do is fight each other as opposed to fight for our constituents, that certainly would be beneficial.
Yeah. Well, you were the council's president for a little while, as we mentioned. How many councilmen did you threaten to kick out?
Never. Although I did have some members of the general public who, like I said, didn't abide by the rules, and I did have to have them removed.
Sure, I noticed in a lot of these clips, the audience was reacting to the turmoil. They were oohing and aahing. Do you know of anyone who shows up to watch, just in case councilmen start getting down each other's throats?
Sometimes people believe that this, the council meeting, is the best reality show on television, so anything can happen. It's like the best reality TV show in Patterson. As opposed to, what is it, the Housewives of New Jersey, which also has a Patterson appeal to it, and then you got Manzowed with Children. And even though it's a Tuesday night, but I guess you could make the argument it's like Monday Night Raw or SmackDown, one of these WWE programs.
Do you feel that way?
People tell me to watch, they get their popcorn ready.
Uh, which of those programs is the most accurate representation of Patterson council meetings? And I noticed you also left out the reality show Jersey Shore.
That's right. I forgot about that situation in Snooki. Sorry.
Yeah.
I was going with the Housewives, and I was going with Manzowed with Children, because the owner of the brownstone, his family is featured on that, and the brownstone is a prominent catering house, catering hall in the city.
Oh, gotcha. Uh, speaking of housewives, just for a second, you are married, so does your wife have any reaction to what goes on in these council meetings?
Yeah, she watches it. I mean, she's disappointed because she feels like there should be more of a constructive conversation around certain issues as opposed to ad hominem attacks at times. So, she's watching for the pure value of the issues.
Hmm.
She doesn't want to tune in and watch mudslinging. It's counterproductive, and it adds no value.
Hmm. Uh, when you were running for mayor in 2014, there was an article in The Observer that labeled you, quote, "The heroic good guy alternative." Do you see yourself as the good guy? And also, is that a low bar for Patterson?
Well, I've heard that before as far as the bar being set very low. I do believe that I have provided reliable and consistent leadership, and I've told my constituents, "I don't like to promise anything, I prefer to produce." And I'd like to think that as far as my approach to government is concerned, it's been very transparent.
For sure. I'm sure other councilmembers feel strongly about what they do, but do you ever judge someone for lashing out during a meeting? I mean, is it understandable what they do? Or should people be held to a higher standard of behavior when they're in your position?
Yeah. Yeah, we do have to show restraint. I mean, it does depend on the context. Sometimes people feel strong, more strongly about certain issues than others.
Mm-hmm.
But I can speak for myself, as far as any issue, as any issue, I've been able to show self-restraint, I've been able to self-regulate.
Yeah.
Mike, quite frankly, I mean, the issue for me in the last two years was overtime abuse. I knew it was happening, so did Councilman Taveras. And we were outspoken. Week after week after week after week, we were pointing out the problem, and quite frankly, certain people had a tin ear. It was falling upon deaf ears and blind eyes. And, I mean, I, I got strident, but it was tempered. And look at it now, look at now, look at now. I mean, it's been uncovered that overtime was abuse, and today you had the mayor and three co-defendants, they got arraigned today. And that's a substantive issue. I'm not attacking the mayor, that's an issue. A councilperson has a dual role. We legislate and we advocate. I got to protect the taxpayers. If I see abuse in any area, I have to highlight it.
Now, today, this is kind of an "I told you so" moment for you, because, um, last month, the council voted on a no-confidence resolution in indicted Mayor Torres.
Oh, yeah.
You said, quote, "I have faith in Patterson, but I don't have confidence in the mayor." Now, this response from Councilman Sahin Kalik, I found interesting.
This is a feel-good resolution. It doesn't do anything. It just, some people are going to just, some people are going to feel good about it. I'm not here to make certain people feel good. I'm here to legislate.
Uh, Andre, do you think that one of the purposes of city council meetings is to make the citizens feel good that councilmembers are doing their job?
Well, I disagree that that was a feel-good resolution. It was certainly not. I don't think anyone felt good about it. I mean, never positive to have your city portrayed in a negative light, because some councilpeople were saying, "Well, if we adopt this resolution, we're going to bring negative attention to Patterson." The damage was already done. I mean, we have a sword of domicles hovering over our heads here in the form of an indicted mayor, and you, you have that feel-good resolution, but that's not the type of resolution that makes you feel good. Feel-good resolutions deal with other issues as far as promoting what's positive in Patterson, whether it's something that deals with athletics or scholastic endeavors, that's feel-good resolution. Or we're going to designate this week autism awareness, that makes us feel good. But a no-confidence in a mayor doesn't, it doesn't make me feel good, because who wants to be right in a situation like that?
Hmm.
I don't know how anyone can say that the no-confidence vote would have tarnished the city's reputation. It's more so the irresponsible and, quite frankly, corrupt actions of a select number of people within municipal government that have brought this shame to Patterson.
There have been multiple councilmembers who ended their terms on criminal charges. Do you ever look around yourself in the meetings and ask, "Which one of these people is going to be gone next?"
The only, you know, Mike, that's actually a spot-on question. Only, the only difference is that I've looked around and said, "Wow, I would have never thought that so-and-so would have gotten indicted, or so-and-so would have gotten indicted." Because there are some, some individuals that I had a good working relationship with, and I would have never suspected that their careers would go down in infamy.
Do you have genuine friends on the city council?
I had a really good friend, Julio Taveras. So, I could say that that's someone I really trusted. And as I said, Ozlong Gao's a personal friend, but Julio and I genuinely, we get together periodically.
So, since both of these men are friends of yours, and since we heard such a strident portrayal of them in that clip from earlier.
Yes.
Is that who they are off-camera? And I'll broaden it to asking, are all councilmembers different off-camera than when they are in that council meeting and it's go time?
I'm glad you broached that. There are councilpeople, when the camera is off, they're type-B personalities, but once it's seven o'clock on a Tuesday night, and Mr. Ming is up there and he's giving us the bow sign, they become type-A.
Well, it's funny, you mentioned type-A. I have seen this kind of behavior in other New Jersey council meetings. It's not unique to Patterson. And look, everything I know about New Jersey comes from Bruce Springsteen songs, so I'm curious, why is New Jersey in perpetual DEFCON 2?
Well, I mean, think about it, right? We, we're overcrowded. We're a small state as far as size is concerned, but we're very densely populated. So, every now and then, it's going to happen, you're going to have people step on each other's toes, but because of the mere fact that there's so many people here. Like the likely, there's always a strong likelihood of getting into an accident here in New Jersey as opposed to a state who might be larger, it might be larger in size but has fewer people. Because that, last time I checked, we're in the top 10 as far as population is concerned, but as far as the size is concerned, we're like, not even in the top 40.
Interesting. So, people just annoy each other more in New Jersey because, because you can't escape them?
Yes. I, Mike, I hope you see some merit to what I said.
Well, I lived in New York City for a while, and people...
Case in point, probably worse.
Yeah, people were not whistling zippity-doodah down the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But I do want to finish on a lighter note.
Uh oh.
It's nothing bad, trust me. I'm curious to know, when is the last time that you walked away from a city council meeting and felt good about what happened?
Mike, you ready for this?
Oh my god.
You sitting down?
I am lying down, just tell me.
All right, wait for it, wait for it. It was actually February, in February, late February, I believe it was February 28.
Okay.
And we adopted a municipal budget that did not call for a tax increase, and that was this year.
Get the [bleep] out of here.
To me, that made me feel better than any other meeting, because like I stated before, I'm here to protect the taxpayer. I am a taxpayer, I represent arguably... I represent arguably the most fiscally conservative ward in the city. And I would venture to say, the ward that probably contributes the most to the tax base, the coffers of the city. So, that made me feel real good.
Uh, I'm standing back up so I can give you a slow clap. That is amazing.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and for some context for the listeners, you did have a mini-government shutdown because you didn't have a budget.
That's right.
So, that makes it even more impressive.
You've done your, I am mightily impressed.
Uh, hey, once I get a drinking problem and become 10 times meaner, I will move to Patterson and run for city council.
And you will get into probably a heated argument once or twice a month.